Yes. Good morning, everyone. It is nine a.m. on Monday, April twenty first, two thousand and twenty five. I will call the meeting of the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners to order. A couple of announcements. Uh, Lincoln County Board of Commissioners reserves the right to enter a closed session at any time as necessary to discuss the agenda item currently before the board. We also reserve the right to take agenda items out of order for the convenience of the parties involved. We will be following the Open Meetings Act with amendments that is posted at the entrance to this room. Our first order of business is to open with prayer. Commissioner Hughley, if you would do us the honor?
Sure. Please join me. Dear my father, we just are especially thankful this special time of year. We are so blessed in this country around this table. I would just ask a little bit of your wisdom on today's meeting. I would ask that you be with those less fortunate than ourselves, uh, both here and around the world. I would ask that you be with those that protect our rights, the military, our people in law enforcement, our first responders, us first responders. I would just ask that you be with us today. Bless this meeting. Amen.
Amen. Thank you.
Actually, you can tell I forgot about what you asked me earlier. Thank you.
Our next order of business is to approve the minutes regarding the Lincoln County Board of Commissioner meeting that was held last week.
Make motion we approve the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners meeting on, uh, when was it last week?
April fourteenth.
April fourteenth. What a coincidence. Twenty twenty five. Thank you.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. If you had a chance to look over the minutes. Is there any discussion or questions? Roll call, please.
Hughley. Williams.
Aye.
Brunns.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Ruler.
Aye.
Moving on, we will consider the following claims and treasurers receipts.
All right. Share a person. Not that your voice isn't big.
Yes, I usually don't get asked to speak up.
Yeah, well, I'll just.
But thank you. Have you had a moment to look over the claims and treasures receipts?
Be my motion to approve those claims and treasure receipts presented with the caveat that we, uh, reserve the right to pull anything as if a question after the final review.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Williams.
Aye.
Hughley.
Aye.
Brunns.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Ruler.
Aye.
Good morning, Todd.
Good morning, Jill.
I'm good. How about you?
All right.
Did you have a good Easter?
Yeah.
Bittersweet.
Um, in a number of ways, yeah.
Yeah.
He threw into the hole and knew how to make an exit.
Yes, he did.
I bet we had a place in the past that we were signed on, dogs. Did I miss something? Maybe this is just a backup sheet with it.
These are all Mr. Thank you. Like, I think it goes with those. The ones that break over.
There's some. Would you sign one too?
So we'll share something.
Yeah, I do.
Here. No. I don't know, aren't they? I guess you'll read it.
Yeah, this is just tucked underneath there. Put it over. I know the, the sheet that's open to half.
Oh, it's in here?
Yes. Take.
Take the paper.
Yep. There's where you guys like tuck up that whole the sheet over. There it goes.
There we go.
Oh, jeez. God. Well, between the three of us, thank you, or the two of you, I should say.
Well, I didn't see it either.
I don't know. I think they make it bigger to actually work with them because they're so small.
We're gonna put it like this.
And put it right there. Thank you, Becky. It's important that I've signed that because I looked at each of those, you know?
Yeah.
I can like one.
I'm not sure much of a.
I love that. That's a word.
You don't, you don't, you don't put a number on this one?
No.
I didn't think you did, but. Transfer money.
Minus one. Getting pretty light on my resume, looks like. Thank you.
Then, then did the moon in the moonlight take apart? True. And that's the right. Is that for?
Fifteen, I think.
Pass me back that one. The last one, I think, there.
Got it. There's Clipper Pedro. When you get there.
Okay.
It's a thing. It's fifteen dollars an hour. I guess I don't know. It has my last name. Hmm. Find out. I don't know.
I don't know.
Yeah, start to change.
Down thirteen fifty. It steps up.
It steps up over a period of how long?
January one, two thousand and twenty five.
Okay.
Through two thousand and twenty six. Oh, fifty each year through two thousand and twenty six.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm gonna pass that back. I can't do this. Sorry. Sorry, Simon. Sorry.
You done this?
Yeah. But I can't have all the.
It is nine fifteen.
You're a little. On my left, you two appear to be.
We will recess as the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners and convene as the Lincoln County Board of Equalization following the Open Meetings Act with amendments, which is posted at the entrance to the room. First, we will approve the minutes regarding the Lincoln County Board of Equalization meeting held last week, April fourteenth, two thousand and twenty five.
I'll approve those minutes with my motion for the Board of Equalization being held April fourteenth of two thousand and twenty five.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Williams.
Aye.
Hughley.
Aye.
Brunns.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Ruler.
Aye.
There she is.
We'll get some chairs out real quick. Probably, probably. A little bit of swearing in the later some.
All right, now we will review the certificates of correction and refund as submitted by the county assessor. County Assessor Julie Stinger indicates that there are none. Thank you, Julie. Next, we have motor vehicle tax exemption application as submitted by the county treasurer, Sherri Newton.
Be my motion that we approve, uh, a number of vehicles for V S L North Black Court LLC, four thousand West Philip. These vehicles are used for, uh, charitable purposes. They're recommended for approval by, uh, the Sherri Newton, the Lincoln County Treasurer. Be my motion that we approve those exemptions.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Hughley.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Brunns.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Ruler.
Aye.
I have two applications for exemption, Form four fifty seven, both for American National Red Cross. Those, uh, submitted by Tina Lyons on their behalf. One is for a twenty twenty five model year Ram Pro Master high-top van. Vehicle is used for transport of employees and supplies to blood drives. The second vehicle on a separate form is Chevy Equinox, model year two thousand and twenty four, passenger car. This vehicle is noted as vehicles used to transport employees and supplies to drug, blood drives as well. These have both been reviewed and recommendation for approval by Sherri Newton. My motion is to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Williams.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Hughley.
Aye.
Brunns.
Aye.
Ruler.
Aye.
That completes our agenda items for the Board of Equalization. That completes our agenda items for the Board of Equalization. We will adjourn at nine nineteen and reconvene as the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners. It is nine twenty. Our agenda item is the swearing in of Deputy Sheriff Devon Steffum. Good morning, Sheriff Kramer.
We can move, we can move. How long do you think?
We have the right to take them out of order, so.
Very good.
For the computer.
We are going to push that agenda item down on the list a little bit, and so our next item will be at nine thirty.
That's, it's time circle. You can't take it ahead, so.
Sheriff Kramer, I was gonna make a little announcement about your department after the swearing in, but if it's okay with you, do you want to do it now? Oh, he is here. Very good. Okay. All parties have arrived, so we will go to our nine twenty swearing in of Deputy Sheriff Devon Steffum. Probably. I love it.
I.
I. Devon Steele.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States
and the Constitution and laws of the state of Nebraska
and the Constitution and the laws of the state of Nebraska
that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same
that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same
and defend them against enemies
and defend them against enemies
born and domestic
born and domestic
and that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of a peace officer
and that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of a peace officer
to the best of my ability
to the best of my ability
so help me God
so help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thanks for serving our community.
Thank you, guys.
At this time, I would like to take a minute to recognize Sheriff Kramer and his jail staff. It's my understanding last week that you guys received a very prestigious award for how the jail staff runs the jail here in Lincoln County. So it's my understanding that Sheriff Kramer, Lieutenant Ball, Sergeant Hamilton, Sergeant Winder, and Sergeant Purvis were all honored at the Nebraska Jail Standards for an award in excellence in detention facility administration. So Sheriff Kramer brought the award. If you guys would all like to stand up and be recognized? Sorry.
I'm gonna turn her back.
How's that working, Captain Dan?
Best side.
You're used to that, right?
Now I gotta duck down so I'm not. Now, there you go, turn it.
There you go. I would just say that your dedication and professionalism and commitment to serving the community in this respect has really set a benchmark for standards all across the state, I understand. So thank you for the work that you do. It's important work.
Say, Sheriff? Well, I was hoping you might.
Well, Nebraska Jail Standards, as you gave assistance for excellence in detention facility administration. So, and then it just has everybody's name on it.
That's awesome.
Very well done. Thank you. Uh-oh. Thank you all for joining us today. We appreciate it.
Not a good idea turning your back on the captain. I guess it's okay to show.
Yeah.
I guess so.
The windy season? Did you see what happened in the framework? Cars. A hotel out by the interstate. Has no way that's going to fit in.
It is nine thirty. The agenda item before us is a presentation by United in Purpose Lincoln County, which is a nonprofit collaborative. So ladies, if you'd like to come up?
Jane, if you could turn those mics on, I'd appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Commissioners, Becky, Tyler's not here, Tammy, thank you for taking time for us today and helping us share a very important message.
Jane, would you like to sign in and just announce everybody in your group that's with you today?
What a treat.
Yes.
Jane Shays, Jennifer Bonning, Ashley, she's the executive director of the Lincoln Connection Home and Shelter. Shreya, she is executive director for ZAPS Consulting, a world-renowned teacher. Ashley is the executive director for the Bridge of Hope Child Advocacy Center. And then Mona's the executive director for Keepers Thought Lincoln County Beautiful.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you for joining us today.
Commissioners. This is a little more emotional than I thought. That's kind of, I don't know where that came from.
Jane, that speaks to the heart that you have for the work that you do.
It's a hard issue.
It is a hard issue.
This is why I think I'm very grateful to you for your continued kindness and listening, so. In the case of funding changes captured in the news. It's very common for many of us to form an opinion about what's happened and then unaffected move on with our lives. Today, we are asking for you and other residents to look at this information through a very specific lens, our local lens. We would like to ask you to think about how in Lincoln County we are helping people solve problems. They may not be problems that you understand or have experienced, but they are significant problems. And if the problems that agencies solve are not problems you faced, we would like to share with you what it means for vulnerable people when they don't get needs met. Jennifer will share her knowledge with you next, and over the course of the next several weeks, we will continue to share stories about what the failure to meet the needs of vulnerable people means. Our nonprofits strive to help humans be their best, refusing to say when someone is at our door, we don't think it makes sense to help you. We believe in providing assistance without dismissing someone's challenges, offering services with dignity, inspiring hope in those in difficult positions. We are asking our community to rally around the programs and work being done here for those in need to help individuals and families thrive so that their self-worth is not diminished by the negative news surrounding the loss of their vital services. Federal funding cuts are often framed as efforts to improve efficiency or reduce spending, but that perspective misses the human cost. These cuts aren't just numbers on a spreadsheet. They represent fewer meals for families in crisis, fewer counselors for children in trauma, and fewer beds for those escaping violence. When we strip away support in the name of saving money, we also strip away compassion and safety and opportunity. Real efficiency must consider not only financial savings, but also the impact on human life and our community well-being. We must not devalue what is needed to live a healthy life for our neighbors and our community members. I'm here with a group of nonprofits who are exploring ways to be better together, to not compete, but to find our strength and our connection. As a collaborative of local nonprofits, we believe that bringing together data across a number of sectors like healthcare, education, housing, mental health, food security, advocacy, and more is essential to telling the full story of how federal funding cuts are affecting our community. Too often, these issues are viewed in silos when in reality, the loss of funding in one area often triggers hardship in another. By uniting our data and our voices, we can more clearly illustrate the interconnectedness of services and the very real impact on our neighbors. This is not just about dollars lost. It's about families who can no longer access shelter, children who will go without meals or after-school care, and vulnerables, excuse me, and vulnerable individuals left without critical support. When we see the full picture, we can advocate more carefully and powerfully for the resources our communities need to survive and thrive. We have asked ourselves, how can we help our fellow nonprofits continue to do incredible work? We have gathered data and estimate that nearly a hundred million dollars in federal funding connected to our community organizations and services could be affected. What is our path forward? We need your help. We ask you to stay informed, learn about how federal programs impact your school, hospital, and nonprofits. We ask you to speak up, contact elected officials to share why ongoing support for rural communities matters. We ask you to support local nonprofits, donate, volunteer, or partner with community organizations, and we ask you to share the message. Help spread awareness by talking with friends, family, and neighbors. Today, we will share the story of an agency who has been deeply affected by recent funding cuts. Well, we will only highlight one agency today. Our group of nonprofits will continue to organize additional opportunities to spotlight other agencies that have also suffered significant losses, exploring the consequences of these setbacks and the impact they have on our community. We'll take a few minutes at the end and certainly take your questions, and then for concerned citizens or the press, you're certainly welcome to join us over at the Wells Fargo Conference Room at ten o'clock for feedback and fabulous ideas. Jennifer.
I'm Jennifer Bonning. I'm with the Rape and Domestic Abuse Program. We serve victims of sexual, domestic violence, human trafficking, teen dating violence, stalking, and harassment. We serve Lincoln, Logan, Lincoln, Logan, McPherson, Hooker, Thomas, and Cherry Counties. We also coordinate the Blueprint for Safety Project and the Batters Intervention Program. We provide twenty-four hour crisis response for our community, advocacy. We have five shelter locations. We go to medical advocacy. We do medical advocacy, court advocacy, law enforcement advocacy, any place there's a need for RDEP, we will be there. In twenty twenty four, we sheltered one hundred and thirty-four individuals, eighty-six women, six men, and forty-two children, for a total of forty-five hundred seventy-nine bed nights. That's about half of what the Homeless Connection did last year. So for RDEP personally, as of July one, we're gonna lose about a hundred and five thousand dollars. October, we will lose access to. October, we will lose access to an additional hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars. All of that money comes directly back into the community and supports our shelters. For example, last year, we spent about a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars on shelter facilities, shelter food maintenance, transportation. So where does that bring us? These are vital services for our community. We touch the lives of some of the most vulnerable individuals that may not come into contact with someone else, another one of our nonprofits. Of those one hundred and thirty-four individuals, thirteen of them were seniors. When seniors come to us, typically they're on disability, food stamps. And if there's no means for them to leave a dangerous situation, they're not going to get the assistance they need. When they come to us, we typically have to reroute their social security so it is not in the hands of the abuser, as well as SNAP cards. A lot of times in these situations, they are not being cared for properly. So it's getting in them contact with doctors, getting their medications back on track, finding them a safe place to go. These are all limited timeframes that we have to get people where they need to go. And with documents, they're taking much longer. So we're having victims stay with us. When it used to be six, four to six weeks, it's now three to six months. And that eliminates a spot for somebody who is in more of a lethality situation. We just don't want it to get to the point that we have to continuously cut shelter and get to the point where we have to make the decision whose life is more important. That is not somewhere we need to be. It puts the community in danger. Forty-two children. I mean, where are these individuals going to go? We appreciate all the work that's been done at bringing more housing into our community, but we're not here yet, and our funding cuts are now. So we will continue to do what we can to bring money in. Unfortunately, with federal funding cuts across the board in all aspects, there's going to be less pots of money to try to pick from. So we're kind of in a crisis at this point because we do not, we do not want to cut shelter. We know there's a need. The numbers are keep going up, and it's not really an option for us not to have them. So here we are. And we're just one of the first that's, that's going to be hit directly.
Thank you for sharing that with us. I do agree that it's important that our community understand not just the work that you do, but the limitations that you have. So thank you for coming in and sharing your stories. Are there any questions from around the table?
I have one question. I'm guessing that most of these are pass-throughs, federal, state. Some of them may be substrate federal. What has been, have you had contact with any people at the state, for example? And what response do you get?
Well, from the state level, you know, their hands are tied. We do have several bills moving through, have moved through committee. The problem is, there's a lot of things that are going to have to be cut from the state budget. Whether or not some of these things that we're dealing with are going to meet, make it into the budget is going to be the problem. If you're referring to the Crime Commission, we do have several grants through the Crime Commission that are federal that are state pass-throughs. It's, the money that we're getting now are not new grants. Typically, we would have written the grants for twenty-five, twenty-six. The, at the state level, they are, do not feel comfortable issuing new grants. All the money that we're getting now is going to be a continuation of money that they had in reserves. So once this money is gone, it's gone. They're hoping that the funding should come back, should come back, to probably the same levels it is now of what we're getting. But they, they don't feel comfortable enough having us write new grants because there's no certain change at the federal level.
Some of those are funds other than Crime Commission funds, right? Because the Crime Commission funds, I know that several of those we continue to pass through, even though we've, they've got a couple of cuts. So thank you. I, and we may talk more. Thank you very much.
So Jennifer, the two hundred and ninety-five thousand aggregate number, what percentage that's federal pass-through? Do you have any idea?
It's all federal.
All federal, one hundred percent.
It's all federal. Most of, most of our nonprofit, federal funding comes from victim service grants that are through the federal. We do have one OVW federal grant that is directly from the, from the, from Washington. That grant was a seven hundred and eighty-five thousand grant over three years that funds our coordination of the Blueprint for Safety Project, which incorporates law enforcement, probation, victim witness, county attorneys. It also includes a project with Hopeless Baranza. It funds a position for Hopeless Baranza, a position for Bridge of Hope, and a portion of a position for Victims Witness here at the courthouse. We have about a year and a half left on that grant. So we are hoping that that continues, but again, there's a lot of uncertainties.
Knowing, knowing Jana and her proactive approach, and I'm sure you're the same, you've probably reached out to our congressional delegate, delegates. What kind of feedback have you gotten? If any, I'm sure you've gotten some response, correct?
Yes.
Anything?
Well, the, it's, the support is there. There's a lot of hands that are tied with all of the, the cuts coming to Medicaid, possibly social security. They're, they're strapped. It's not all going to make it into the budget, so. There is support, but it's, the hands are tied, as you could see.
The, the funding that you, you've been receiving, these programs, you're, I've heard you say you're hopeful that they continue. Have any programs been outright cut and done away with, or are they just paused at this point? Or is it just the uncertainty?
Right now, our grants, the, the money that they will fund us, they will fund a seventy, seventy-five percent of the grants through June. So the money with the grants that we had would typically, well, they'd run out in March. We're going to have some moves and things around. Our, our grant that is supported, supported by VOWA Stop Funding is no longer going to support victim services. That will cut our entire Valentine program. So these, the funding has typically been being cut. The last two, round of two-year grants that we will complete in, on June thirtieth, we received a forty-six percent cut two years ago. So they were expecting another thirty percent cut. So when we do get to the point where we write, rewrite grants, we're probably going to be about that thirty percent.
Commissioner.
Go ahead.
Pardon me. Commissioner Burns, too, we certainly have a word that is definitive on some of the offices that support us being eliminated. So while the funding question is, continues to be a question, again, as you pointed out, a lot of uncertainty. The research that feeds our work is being eliminated in several cases, which I'm sure you're, you're very aware of.
Well, it's my anticipation and my hope that once some of this federal funding has gone through the elimination of the fraud and misuse, that it will be resumed. That would be my hope. But you don't get thirty-seven trillion dollars in debt by not being, you have to be conscious of where the money goes. So I support the idea of eliminating fraud and abuse so that the money that's supposed to go to your type of organizations is there. And I hope it returns.
As do we.
Ladies, thank you. You have invited me into some conversations prior to this. And so thank you, because I do think awareness is, is very important. I love what you guys are doing with coming together, supporting each other, and making it non-competitive. I think that's very important. I've witnessed you identify duplicate services and try to eliminate that so that you are getting the most use out of the funds that are still coming in. That is very important and admirable. So always feel welcome coming in here, Jana, and sharing your stories. Like you said, this is emotional. So I would just like to say that, you know, the work that you do matters and your voices are heard. It matters a lot. So especially when you talk about dealing with the children in our communities. So let's keep working together, exploring alternative funding sources. I do believe that there are things out there that we can help you go after in advocating. So I will be sure to pass this message on up through the people I have contact with. So let's, let's stay in contact and keep up the good work.
Yes, keep up the good work.
Thank you, beautiful. Your constituency is our constituency, and we look forward to working together to make sure that Lincoln County is taken care of. Thank you for your time, again.
Thank you for what you do.
Thank you all for the work that you do. I didn't see you sneak in. Nice to see you back there. Okay, our next item is discuss and consider a proposal from Hall Brothers for an Onyx for Project C fifty-six, twenty-five seventeen on Banner Road.
Morning. Jason Schultz, Lincoln County Highway Superintendent.
Brian Gloss, Lincoln County Deputy Highway Superintendent.
Good morning.
Good morning. So this proposal is for the project we defined in our one and six-year plan, as you mentioned already. And it's the Onyx coating of the seven point six miles from Brady south and east along that road. So I guess we're here to ask.
How many miles, sorry?
Seven point six.
Oh, it is right there.
And this product is a patented product that is unique to this supplier and this contractor. So I did have Tyler take a look at that as well. I guess I won't speak for him, but I'll let him speak to the nature of the acceptance of the proposal.
To me, it seems to be a pretty unique product. Lots of conversations about it. Really not anyone else that they have found sort of nowhere around here that's going to be useful that has a product like this or does this. So I think from a purchasing perspective, proceed on.
And this, this product, we've been looking at, Brian and I have, for a couple of years now and watching different areas where they've used this product. They use it a lot in Dawson County with great results over the past four to five years. And the city of North Platte actually did some in the city here a year ago, a little over a year ago, that we went out and watched their process and looked at how it performs. And I think this is a great step in our asphalt maintenance program to try to get ahead on some of these roads that were previously overlaid and just in maintaining them.
Dawson County has even core sample roads that they've used it on. And they say there's more than meets the eye. It penetrates more than.
So explain, what does it actually do? What does this product do? You know, in compare, comparison to other uses of sealing?
So this reseals the surface. It re, I guess rebuilds the aggregate in the surface as well to give it a, just a longer, seals it number one to prevent the top from drying out. That's the biggest thing. And then it resurfaces that top, too, that gets wore down. So and the aggregates they use in here are highly durable. They hold up really well. In talking with Dawson County on it, they, I think that Hall Brothers recommends three to four years for a reapplication. But with what they're seeing and the wear that they're getting, they're saying it's five to seven is what they're looking at. So it's really holding up very well.
Is this a paving stone?
Uh, it's a quartz. Ground quartz.
There's a sample in there, too, I think.
Oh, yeah, there is, actually.
I think it was on this side.
Here's a sample of, actually, if you could.
Compared to armor coat, when this is done, it's done. They put traffic on it in less than an hour. There's no, we're not renting a pickup broom to go out and clean up stuff. This can be painted.
Goes on as a slurry, right?
Yep, and it's brushed, it's brushed on, too, in their application, sprayed and then brushed so it works into the surface very well. There's really nothing we've seen on any of the roads we've looked at of anything peeling up, coming up, or deteriorating.
The equivalent of putting like an epoxy seal on top of a concrete floor or something like that.
Somewhat. It's, it's considered a mastic. So it's not quite the level of an armor coat, but there's similar mastics, but this one's pretty unique because of the, like, all the polymers that are in it and then plus the catalysts that allow it to set quicker, to open traffic on it sooner.
What happens when you have to do an overlay? If you, where we're going now, it's taking that milling step on overlays to get a better lay down and a smoother road bed and build a little better binding value. What, what would this be, how would this impact, you know, seven years from now, doing a three-inch overlay on that road?
Well, and I guess in this case, this product, we wouldn't be looking at doing an overlay anytime in the near future. If anything, we'd be reapplying in five to seven years.
Rather than doing overlay.
Extending that out and then looking at it again and possibly doing another round of it. And that's, that's the whole purpose of what we're trying to do is extend these pavements out so we eliminate the overlay. Now, I did have, if you don't mind calling on you, Tom, but I had Tom look at this with TC Engineering, too. And so I guess we didn't talk about what the effects would be if you ever did get to the point of a, an overlay, but do you, do you mind coming up, Tom?
Uh, Tom Werble with TC Engineering. Actually, we did look at that. And of course, you mentioned can't a mill. A mill would take it off. So if you wanted overlay, it wouldn't be much to mill it and overlay it. But I agree with Jason and Brian, you know, we talked about this. Obviously, maintenance to me is the biggest single thing you could do for a road. And cracks in is one of the biggest ones. The other, next thing is to, is to do at least armor coat. Armor coat is more expensive than this process generally, is what the city told me. It is a slurry, like you said, can it is the sand and oil mixed together. And then, as Jason said, it's brushed into the surface. It's just another tool in the toolbox to use to try. And since it's already been used in other counties, it seems like that the cat is out of the bag in the sense of this being reliable. Somebody else has tested it. That's the point. And it's not, so it's not like we're guinea pigs. This is something. That's the point. And it's not, so it's not like we're guinea pigs. Uh, this is something that I think these guys have done some research on. I talked to Brad at the city. I talked to some other people. I talked to these guys. And I think it's worth a shot if it helps save the payment and you don't have to overlay in the future. It's worth it, you know, to me. But in terms of impairing an overlay, when you overlay, you always put down a tack code typically, and then, uh, almost always. And then, uh, I'm not sure all that would interface with the, with the Onyx treatment, but I doubt if it would make much difference to it. More likely would tend to dissolve whatever was there and still create a surface to bond to. But if, if you worry about it, you can always do a very light skim mill and take care of it. It'll be very simple to do, so.
I just didn't know, I'm sorry, I didn't mean, I didn't, I just didn't realize that we were supplanting the overlay process to do this. This, that sounds great.
It's a tool. It's not perfect like anything. If it was, if it was perfect, they did it on the interstate. But they don't even hardly do asphalt on the interstate, because it just doesn't hold up over time, you know?
I've been saying for a long time that we need a more robust maintenance program. We can't just have a maintenance program that's overlay. It's too expensive.
Yep.
With the budgetary pressures that we're all under.
Right.
I'm excited about this. So, um, anything that we can do to prolong the, the lifespan of that road surface, I'm all about.
Agreed. That's, that's what we're looking at doing as well. So-
Jason, as a member of your road committee, some of the conversations we had had before, it's my understanding this actually eliminates some steps that you would have to do to try to prolong the life of the road by combining them into this product and the application of it?
Um, yes and no. We still have to crack seal ahead of this, which-
Okay.
We have completed that section of road, the crack seal already, which that's about your first major component of maintenance is to crack seal. But then, this will resurface and seal the rest of the roadway, um, in addition to that. So-
Jason, I have a question on, I, I appreciate Kent's question because we're not going to get away from overlays. We're going to continue doing them for as long as we have asphalt roads, period, end of story. So, that we can prolong the life of the road, I think, is incredible. Okay? And I'm, I'm, driven Banner Road three, four, or five times a year, but I don't pay any attention as to the shape. Crack sealing is one thing, but getting the surface early enough before we start getting a lot of, you know, indentations and stuff, small potholes, but even small, small potholes on a process like this, you need to get those things filled, leveled out, sealed. And so, I assume all of that has been done, not just the crack sealing, but you know, there's, we, we just, in asphalt roads, expansion right now is a good time of year because we don't have expansion. We're contraction. We're just, we're at a neutral point in our, in our year. So, when that opens up in the winter, I don't know what is going to happen with this product. I mean, it's going to be no different than just opening up with anything. It might have a little bit of flexibility. Maybe it doesn't. But it's going to continue to do that in the wintertime. Okay? Um, so, I was hoping maybe we'd start with a smaller project to make sure it worked. If Dawson County has done it, you guys are the experts. I appreciate the work you've done, and I'll be supportive.
Uh, question, two questions I have. Tom, you talk about if you were to mill, mill this surface somewhere down the road, the material that is inside of this doesn't have a negative effect on the millings that you might use for another purpose?
I would assume it would be a harder mill than a typical surface, but they mill concrete, so I don't see any problem going. That's-
Okay. The other question is, this has a bit of a grit to it. I believe in some of our previous discussions, that a little extra traction on the road wouldn't be another advantage. Is that correct?
Yeah. Yeah, I think that's fair.
You know, how long is this little, I mean, it is a sealer, okay? And, and that's going to wear. It's going to wear off. How long, obviously depends on traffic, but that takes a lot of truck traffic and harvest time, a lot of truck traffic. That would be my concern, is how long does this actually, where surface before we have?
Well, I, I think, like you said, the manufacturer recommends a three to four-year re-treatment, but with what Dawson County's seeing in their roads, they have some that are four years old that really are showing hardly any signs of wear on them. So, they're looking to extend that to like the five to seven year before you have to reapply.
So, is part of your project, then, are you planning it every four or five years? If not, we should, of doing this same process to that road, because if we're not going to do something, then we, there's no sense doing this if we're not going to continue it. So, as part of your budgeting process, every four years, I would assume you're going to include another two fifty to do this, correct?
Well, I think, I think right now, we're looking more in the five to seven year range of having to reapply. Um, and that'll be something, we'll keep an eye on the traffic and, and how it's holding up, too, depending on our road.
Yeah, if you're going to go that far out of the manufacturer specs, I'd really suggest that you do a lot of really solid assessment on the wear and tear of this, because I don't want us to get to a point where we make a commitment to build a product like this, and we're not watching it, and we're, we're budgeting for five to seven years, but it does need to be put down in four years. So-
The good way to keep an eye on that as well is Dawson County's actually done this on, right where the road hits the county line on Banner into Dawson County. And that's been there for two, three years, I think?
Two.
Two years. So, they're ahead of us already on that end of it, so we can continue to monitor and keep an eye on how that relates. It's the same traffic on the same road. We can see how their, theirs performs and kind of help that in our assessment as well.
Just, my ask is just to have solid assessment-
Yep.
On a regular basis. And Tom, you said that you believe this is cheaper than standard armor coating?
That's what I've been told, is that it's cheaper than armor coat. Uh, and of course, armor coat gives you a little bit of structure, because it gives you about a three-eighths inch of a surface, but it does, you also have the claims from broken windshield, et cetera. So, there's other disadvantages to things. But I would, having looked at this with these guys and talking to people, I think it's worth a shot. And I would suggest, too, that along the lines of Joe was mentioning, it isn't a bad idea, to anticipate other roads receiving the same treatment. So, this might be something that develops into a, not just that road, but other roads receiving that as well. So, I'd encourage you to consider that in your one and six-year.
Definitely, like, like I said, a more robust maintenance program has been needed for a while. This may be a really good tool for the toolbox.
We believe so.
Jason, if we decide not to go this route, what would you want to do? What would be your recommendation for the road?
Uh, well, we would have to, at, at some point, you need to do something to reseal the surface and, um-
So, either an armor coating or a mill and overlay?
Well, yeah, but your, your typical armor coating, which is a little bit more expensive, I guess, and, you know, my research, too, um, you would want to do when it's a little bit later in its life.
Probably, yeah.
And you, what we're trying to do is avoid any of that, getting to that point. It's, it's like, you know, this is your first, second step of maintenance behind crack seal, and trying to get ahead of that and preserve your, your pavement sooner, I guess, than having to go to more.
So, armor coat is, is kind of like a, more like a rehabilitation process. This is more like a preventive process.
Preventative.
Yes.
Just a difference in-
Proactive, not reactive.
Right. That's it, yeah.
And Jason, that amount fits into your budget?
Yes, we actually do have, uh, we have two hundred thousand in our budget for this year for, uh, this item, actually.
Okay.
And when would this work begin?
Uh, they would probably be able to complete it late May or early June.
Very good. Is there any other questions?
Chair, I'd make the motion that we approve the proposal from Hall Brothers for Onyx for Project C fifty-six dash parentheses twenty-five seventeen on Banner Road.
The amount of?
In the amount of one hundred ninety-six thousand, six hundred ninety-two dollars and ninety pence.
And authorized?
Not, let's make that one hundred and ninety-six thousand, nine hundred and sixty-two dollars and ninety cents.
I thought it hit zero, zero.
That's what he said.
He said six-nine. He just switched them.
I see.
No big deal. Just for the record.
And authorized, the chair has signed.
That'd be a good idea.
I would second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
Just for the record, this is a highly unique, uh, product, as annotated by our deputy county attorney, and there's no other-
No need for competitive bids. Very good. Roll call, please.
Wider.
Hi.
Brunns.
Hi.
Ugly.
Hi.
Weens.
Hi.
Luler.
Hi.
Thanks for your input, Tom.
Thank you, Tom.
Yeah, Tom, Jason, Brian.
You might as well hold your seats, because you're next also. Discuss and consider agreement with NPPD for this Slough Road Project C fifty-six dash twenty-five eleven.
So, this is an agreement for some work, uh, that we discussed previously as well. NPPD being the great partners, they've always been with us and working together with us on, uh, projects. Um, they needed to replace one of their culverts on Slough Road there. So, they approached us, and we looked at it and went through everything. So, this is just a simple agreement of who's responsible for, for what, just kind of laying out the responsibilities. And we felt it was, uh, just something we need to go ahead and do is at least have an agreement relating to the project. So, and Brian Hope with NPPD is in the audience. If anybody has any questions for them.
Oh, I've got plenty of questions for Brian.
About this?
Oh, no.
About the agreement, Joe.
Thanks for clarifying that, Brian. I think it's, I think it's a great recommendation, Jason. Are there any discussion or questions on the agreement?
Make a motion, if you're ready-
I am ready.
-that we authorize the chairperson to sign the agreement for, uh, NPPD for Slough Road Project Number C fifty-six twenty-five eleven.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ugly.
Hi.
Weens.
Hi.
Brunns.
Hi.
Wider.
Hi.
Luler.
Hi. Okay.
Yes, Mr. Prechus.
Moving on, we have received bids for the Lincoln County Department of Road Mill and Overlay Project twenty-two-five dash zero-one.
You want me to open this?
Yes.
There's one. Maybe I'll, maybe I will, maybe I will.
It's a lot of tape.
What's the scope of this project?
Good question. Jason, if you would like to, while they're getting the envelopes ready, just give us a rundown on what the project is about.
Yeah, so this is a mill and overlay project, um, consisting of, there's actually three parts to this project. We had, um, let's see if I can find my notes here. But there was the remainder of North River Road. Um, it was going to be completed from where we ended last year's project down to the, um, end of that asphalt there.
Where it intersects north of Hershey?
No.
Or all the way to Sutherland?
Yeah, all the way.
But it doesn't go all the way to Sutherland. It's like three and a half miles.
Where it dead ends, yeah.
Trace. Yeah.
Yep. Um, and then the second segment, it would be North Brady Road. So, it would go from the village limits all the way up to about-
Wild Horse.
Three quarters of a mile north of Wild Horse, roughly.
Okay.
Um, and there's already a mile that we completed there last year. Um, so let's skip over that mile, of course. And then, the other area is, uh, Suburban Road out north of town here. So, all the way from Eschelman across eighty-three to the, into the asphalt by Washport.
Okay. Thank you. So, we have two bids. Looks like the first one is from Western Engineering. This bid price per square yard of milling is a dollar sixty. Total square yards, one hundred and forty-eight thousand. The milling bid is two hundred and thirty-six thousand, eight hundred dollars. Bid price per road ton of asphalt is eighty-four dollars per ton. Asphalt bid total, one million, six hundred and forty-three thousand and forty dollars. Total bid for milling and asphalt combined is one million, eight hundred and seventy-nine thousand, eight hundred and forty dollars. It has a start date of October first, twenty-twenty-five, with the completion November thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five. Included is the equipment assessment certification for Western Engineering. There's also a free competitive bid document and the equal opportunity clo, clause document.
I'm going to be cheating off of yours, Chris.
Brian?
The next bid is from Shellco Construction. They have included a bid bond document. Their price per square yard of milling is ninety cents. A total square yards of one hundred and forty-eight thousand. The milling bid total is a hundred and thirty-three thousand, two hundred. Bid price per road ton of asphalt is ninety-two eighty. For a total tons of nineteen thousand, five hundred and sixty, that brings the asphalt bid to one million, eight hundred and fifteen dollars and a hundred, I'm sorry, one million, eight hundred and fifteen thousand, one hundred and sixty-eight. Total bid for milling and asphalt combined is one million, nine hundred and forty-eight thousand, three hundred and sixty-eight. Start date would be September fif, or, I'm sorry, July fifteenth, twenty-twenty-five, with a completion date of September fifteenth, twenty-twenty-five. Also included is their equipment assessment certification, the free competitive bid document, and the equal opportunity clause document.
What was Western's, um, per ton cost on your asphalt?
Eighty-four.
Eighty-four.
Oh, eighty-four.
Yep.
Wow.
If you could read my scratch.
Within your numbers. Are those within your numbers, budgeted?
Yeah, what did you-
Uh, they're right. One's, one's below, one's above. So, yep, they're pretty close.
Okay, thank you.
Does anyone have any questions at this time about the information I read into the record? Jason and Brian, would you guys like some time to review that?
Yeah, if we can with... we'll get with Tom and take a look at these and come back here in a little bit.
Okay.
Give us your recommendation, I guess.
Very good. See you back in a bit. While they're reviewing that, we will move on to discuss and consider the bid letter of support for Pinpoint Communications. So I had forwarded a letter that NACO had in their toolbox that they completed for us that was one of our recommended options for submitting letters requested by the providers who are doing work on the bead expansion project in Lincoln County. So if you'd like to take a minute to read through it.
Basically, these are identical letters, correct?
Basically.
For each of the two proposals?
Yes.
Thank you.
And we're basically saying that we don't prefer one over the other. We just think that each one would maybe do the job we want done, correct?
Yes, you are correct.
I like the somewhat generic first paragraph that identifies that we recognize the need, but we aren't picking winners and losers because, as I said last week, I have a lot of angst that there's just no coordination statewide with these projects. We've got so many providers within the county that some have done a better job than others. And it doesn't matter who they are, but I like the fact that we are just welcoming another avenue for our citizens to get the service, so.
Who makes the choice? Who decides?
That would be the Nebraska Broadband Office. There is a portal that all applicants are using. And there is a long list of criteria that need to be met. For me personally, along the lines that Commissioner Weems just addressed, I didn't feel like I had enough experience with any of these companies to make a strong recommendation one way or the other. I like to lean on the work that NACO has done and the experience. They've been very involved in the broadband conversation for years. And it was their recommendation that we welcome all providers into our community. The Nebraska Broadband Office will do their due diligence. It's also my understanding that any kind of a letter they got gives them the same amount of points in that portal. So I feel like welcoming them in and letting the broadband office do their area of expertise was in our best interest. So I'm comfortable with this letter.
Madam Chair, are you ready for a motion?
I am.
I'd make a motion that we approved the letter of support for Pinpoint and authorize your signature. It's a generic letter saying we were welcoming the expansion of broadband. That'd be my motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any other remarks or discussion?
Is there any way that through NACO we can get a little bit more definitive idea of how these are being graded, these applications through the bead office? I mean, your comment about any kind of letter gives them the same kind of point, that's concerning. I mean, we're talking about the allocation of unprecedented amount of funds.
Yeah, it's my understanding that a welcome letter carries the same weight as a strong letter of recommendation. But there is like a long list of criteria that they have to meet to get the funding. And the bead office will evaluate that. Am I right, Tyler?
The local letters of support in total are worth 4% of their overall score.
Yeah.
It's 10 out of 400 points on the matrix.
It's a very small piece of the picture.
The vast majority of the weight is about, well, whether or not they intend to keep the services at low cost. The state has different tiers on that, and then basically how quickly they can get done. So this is an extremely, extremely higher part of their score.
Can you give me that information, that way we can review?
Actually, Commissioner Brunns, the NBO Office has a great website that spells all this out. If you're into reading, a lot of information.
I would like the Cliff Notes version because I have other things.
They have been very transparent, and so they have a great website. Plus, the toolkit that NACO has shared with all of us has a lot of good information in there also. Have we done roll call yet, Tammy?
No.
Roll call, please.
Hugley.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Weems.
Aye.
Brunns.
Aye.
Luer.
Aye.
Our next item is this exact same topic for NextLink Company.
Chair, I would make the motion that we approve the bead letter of support for NextLink Internet for broadband expansion and your signature.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? For me, the same remarks apply. Roll call, please.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Brunns.
Aye.
Hugley.
Aye.
Weems.
Aye.
Luer.
Aye.
Becky, you have their contact information to send that to. Yeah, call me. I've got it for you. Our next agenda item is at 10:30.
We do have a couple folks come back in the room.
Oh, you are back. Very good. You're being quiet today. Thank you, Commissioner Woodruff.
Jason Schultz, Lincoln County Highway Superintendent. So after review, everything looks complete and correct. I guess it would be our recommendation to accept the bid from Western Engineering Company as the low proposal for the project.
It would be my motion to accept that bid from Western Engineering for the project identified, the three projects identified in the document for an aggregate value of $1,879,840.
I would second that, and I would want to express appreciation for two bids that were very, very competitive.
Very competitive.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? I too would like to thank everybody for showing up and bidding for us. You guys always do a great job for Lincoln County, and we appreciate you. With that, roll call, please.
Weems.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Hugley. Brunns.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. An unusual tone. Thank you for your help.
Thank you.
Seventy grand, approximately.
Yeah, that's very close. Not to mention, look at how close Jason's budgeting for that was. Right at Frank in the window.
Thank you. Appreciate it. We'll fix that. We'll fix her wagon, honey.
God bless you.
I think I'm going to ask Gina if she would go on nugs with me. Am I doing nugs in the morning? I assume since I have prayer.
Yes.
And I'm going to ask that she go on with me.
Gina? I think she'd like it.
That goes with that.
That fell off of that? No? Took a lot of them, same good. It is 10:30. We have discuss and consider a grant from Farm Credit Services for a camera for the Lincoln County Dive Team. Good morning, Mr. Moses. If you guys would like to sign in and announce yourselves for the record.
Scott Moses, President, Lincoln County Dive Rescue.
I'm Craig Bristol. I'm the dive captain for the Lincoln County Dive Rescue.
Good morning.
How's everybody today?
Good, good.
We demoed a underwater sonar camera the end of last year, into the beginning of this year. The camera cost is $5,995. Applied for a grant for $5,000 through Farm Credit Services and got awarded it. So we basically need to get approval to use that and $1,000 out of our budget to purchase said camera.
You say it was $59.95?
Yes.
Scott, had you budgeted that entire amount into your budget?
No, we hadn't. When we demoed this was well after budget started. And we had kind of talked to this company about a year and a half ago, and we knew we didn't have the funds at that time to purchase it. So we waited till this year when they offered a demo of the unit, and they sent it out to us, and we tried it for a couple months. Fortunately, we didn't have any life scenarios to use it on, but we did a couple pool sessions with it, and it works very well.
How does it work, Scott? Just curious how... is it something you hang on the side of your boat?
No, it's actually a handheld unit. The screen is about yay big. You set it underwater and you slowly scan about 180-degree area, and it marks Xs and Os on the screen of probable locations of your victim that you're looking for. And when you pull it out of water, it will eliminate the ones that it doesn't think are target areas.
So it gives you a cache of information that you can look at on your app, on the app or something?
Yeah, or just on the machine itself. On the machine. It'll give us the distance to the target.
And depth.
And depth of where it's at.
What's the... I'm curious, the effective range?
Uh, I think it was 160 feet at a time. And we can scan from shore or out in the water off of a boat with it.
160 foot's pretty good in foot and a half water, isn't it? That's about what we have around here, I'll have to tell you.
Well, I believe you guys were out at the canal recently, and that's pretty deep. And that water can be fast with a lot of debris in it. You wouldn't think so for the canal, but there's a lot of hazards there. So I would like to commend you in going after a grant. I did not know that Farm Credit Services did grants like that. So kudos to them for having that available, and good for you for going after it and getting it. Do you have the other $1,000 in your budget?
Yes.
That can be used for this?
Chair, I'd make the motion that we approve that grant from Farm Credit Services for a camera for the Lincoln County Dive Team in the amount of $5,000.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
But this income, I mean, it's pass-through essentially. Is that going to have any impact budget-wise? I don't think so. Anything significant?
No, I told Scott we'll just put it in the general fund and the grant funds, and they'll just take $5,000 out of the grant funds, which is enough money in there. They've only used 15% of their budget, so they've got plenty of money in their budget for the other thousand.
Thank you for that, too.
What do you know, Art? That's going to mean it's coming here.
That's what time is coming.
We might need to use some of that to insulate your building. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Weems.
Aye.
Hugley.
Aye.
Brunns.
Aye.
Luer.
Aye.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, guys. Good job. I am going to skip ahead to hear concerns from elected officials, department heads, or their representatives. Man, we need a rain to settle the dust. I don't have allergies, but today I'm really struggling. Mary, do you have anything that you'd like to address with us today?
No.
Nice to see you. Hope you had a good Easter.
Sixty-six, the last crank?
Yes.
At this time, we will do the Lincoln County Commissioners Committee Reports.
Madam Chair, I do have a committee report from the Planning and Zoning Committee. We did meet with Keith Marvin, with Marvin Planning Consultants, last week on Tuesday, and received quite a bit of feedback on where they are in the process. And in that conversation, really grilled down on next steps and trying to... We got some, I think, firm commitments as far as timeline on when we can expect to see everything wrapped up. I'd say they're probably at greater than 90% completion. They've got a couple more pieces of data to get, and he's got some edits to make. And we have our homework, you and I, as well as some members of the Planning Commission, on deliverables to them after going through with a fine-tooth comb and making any final suggestions. But it looks like they will have their final draft of the comprehensive plan finished. They still need to do the zoning regulations portion, but that should take considerably less time to get completed with Judy Clark and her staff. So I think tentatively, we're looking at, not even tentatively, we kind of put their feet to the fire. We're looking at the last week in July and the first week in August for unveiling the total comprehensive land use plan and the zoning regulations to the public for public comment. The last week in August and the first week in September for that to go through the public hearing process with the Planning Commission. And the last week in September, the first week in October for that to go through the public hearing process and our conversation and decision here at the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners. So that's the plan. So that's the plan. The cop plan is really making great progress. But again, we wanted to see this as a whole package with the zoning regulations. And so he's going to finish up the comprehensive plan for the foundation for the zoning regulations. And then him and Judy will work through late spring and early summer to get that handled up. So that's where we're at with it. There's a lot of information in the draft that we saw.
We came... It was a well-attended meeting. The conference room was full. Lots of good conversation. We were very definitive and very firm in some of our expectations moving forward at this point. I think Keith understands that we've had a lot of heartburn over how long this has taken. And I believe we are at a point... I was glad to see Jesse Poor at the meeting also. He answered a lot of good questions for us and contributed things that I hadn't even thought about yet. So Chris and I did come away with a god-awful amount of homework. It's a lot. I already had some changes or additions that I wanted to see that... We made a commitment to share our feedback to Keith in the next two weeks so they could start working on the additions. If any of you guys would like to see my packet that I have, I would gladly share it if you would like to review it. We were very firm on our expectation for community engagement.
Yes.
Keith wasn't necessarily in agreement with what we wanted, but we told him that's what this board collectively had laid out from the very beginning, and we were going to stay true to that request. So that's where we're at with that, so.
That's all I had for my updates.
Very good. Does anybody have any other committee reports? Tyler, do we have a need for a closed session today?
I do not.
Very good. Good news. If no one has anything else for the good of the county? Oh, we do have to go to the jail today. Very good.
Somebody does. If you have a caller, Mike, I need to beg you out.
Okay, that would work. Joe, are you able to come with us?
Okay, thank you.
The jail tour? So we will not be adjourning or recessing at this time. We will be taking our show on the road to the jail.